Good evening, welcome to the April 4th, 2012 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening. That would be a PRD amendment for approximately 22.6 acres along Florence Road, known as Stewart Crossing, formerly known as Fillmore West. Old South Properties Incorporated is the applicant. Ms. Ealy, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Plan Commission members. Not whatever, sorry. I almost called you counsel. Some of you are, I guess. Our only public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning property that's located along the western side of Florence Road. It's identified on the blue color of the map before you, and it's, I think, going to be on the TV screen here in just a moment. The map also shows an area which is hatched, and this request came to you from one of the property owners who owns 24 lots in the subdivision, and Planning Commission decided to broaden the study and study possibly amending the PRD for the entire property. And of course, you can make your decision what you'd like to do today, but it is for the property shaded in blue, which was formerly known as Fillmore West and was renamed as Stewart's Crossing. It was owned PRD, planned residential district, in 2005. And at that time, a program book was submitted to both the Planning Commission and Council, and was approved by both bodies that outlined the specific requirements for that PRD. This property owner was again another victim of the poor economic situation, and a bank has now become, or had become, an owner of the property. The bank sold 24 of the lots to Old South Property, who is listed as the applicant on this rezoning request. And Old South owns lots 6 through 14, 17, lot 23, lots 26 through 28, and 33 through 38, for a total of 24 lots in the subdivision. The applicant, Old South, has approached staff and stated that they're having difficulties finding a housing product that they can build on these lots, and have asked for amendments. The amendment would not change the maximum number of permitted lots. It was 68 and will continue to be 68, but what they're asking for you to consider changing or amending the program book is to reduce the setback for garage doors. Currently, the houses can be set back 25 feet from the front property line, and the garages are pushed back an additional 10 feet for a total of 35 feet from the front property line. They're asking you to reduce the setback for the garage so that it is the same as the house. So that both the garage and house would be able to be set back a minimum of 25 feet from the front property line. The second request is that they would like to use cementitious siding, and sometimes that's commonly known as hardy plank, to be a part of the permitted exterior. The program currently calls for brick or stone, and they'd like for hardy plank or cementitious siding to count toward that minimum requirement, so to be able to use that on the fronts of the houses. So the two requirements are to reduce the garage setback and to allow additional material to be included in that minimum percentage of masonry. The applicant has provided some revised revisions, and those have been included in your program books. If approved, then they would be the, some of the pages in the approved book would be replaced with these pages. There is a representative from the applicant here this evening. Do you have something that you want to speak? He'll approach the microphone, but after he does, we should conduct a public hearing before deciding whether you want to approve this amendment for some lots, all the lots, or none of the lots. And staff is available for answering any questions you have either before or after the public hearing. Mr. Beavers?
Jason Beavers with Old South Properties. Just wanted to speak a few seconds about this, but the basic reason we're doing this is in order, these lots are pretty shallow, and when we set back that garage, it's causing a problem with nobody's having a backyard. You know, that's 10 more feet if we could scoop the house up for people to be able to enjoy their backyard. Another thing is, you know, the hardy. I know we had a letter on that, a concern about that. And this is a product we're building pretty much in most of our subdivisions in town, Spring Hill, Nashville. This seems to be what people want nowadays. This is what we're selling. These are pretty much most of the points, and I'll be glad to answer any of the questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Beavers? We may have some after the public hearing, but thank you very much. Any questions for members of the Planning Commission before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Please hold your comments no more than three minutes if you would. Make all your comments or questions to the Planning Commission, and the staff will try to answer any questions you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing. Anybody that'd like to come forward, please come forward at this time. Also, if you would, state your name and address when you come forward.
My name is Josh Jenkins. My address, 5219 Stewart Crossing Boulevard, Murfreesboro, 37129. My wife and I just bought our first home in Stewart Crossing in August of last year. We specifically picked the neighborhood for the style of homes that are being built. I understand that Old South has now bought, you know, the 24 lots of properties. Just wanted to show up and voice our objection to the requested revisions. If we wanted to go buy a house with siding or hardy board, there's plenty of other neighborhoods, but we specifically chose this neighborhood for the style of home that was being built. We liked that the front of the house sets closest and the garage is set back, and with all due respect, I think we have plenty of backyard. The garage, the living space of the house is actually set back farther than the garage does with our floor plan. I don't think it's a valid point that they're having a hard time finding a floor plan to put in the neighborhood as big of a builder Old South is. They have plenty of opportunities to get different floor plans. They knew the PRD was in place when they bought the lots, so they had plenty of opportunity to plan. And even the pictures that they've submitted, they're asking to reduce the restriction and move the garage up, but all they've done is reverse it. The garage is front, and the living space is moved back. So if they're arguing that it increases backyard space, it doesn't make sense. So on behalf of me and my wife, we just wanted to state our objection.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Would anybody else like to come forward?
Chris Hardwick, at 5220 Stewart Crossing in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37129. Me and my fiancee also just bought our first house. We're kind of under the same objection. We don't understand why the backyard would be a big issue. We were able just to put up 156 total square foot fence in the backyard, and it is more enough than enough for enough space in the backyard itself. I don't understand how they're having a hard time finding properties. It seems like before you would buy 26 lots, you would do your homework a little bit better before you put that much money and invest into a property that you have nothing to deal with. Our big objection is, you know, once again, the siding. We bought a house for the brick. We didn't buy a house so we could get into a very inexpensive, cheap neighborhood. We want the quality to stay what it is, so the home values will stay what it is. That's our objection.
Thank you, Mr. Hardwick. Anybody else?
Hello? Excuse me, my name's Tyler Hyten. I'm at 5208 Stewart Crossing, Murfreesboro, of course. I'm actually the original person there that bought the property from Fox Ridge at the time. And, you know, too, I mean, I wanted to come to state my objection to, you know, both, really. Matter of fact, I actually have the smallest yard of all. My property was set back, the house was set back actually behind the garage. I mean, it's fine for myself. I mean, again, the quality of the neighborhood was my main driving force to purchasing it. I like the way the neighborhood has gone now with wrought iron, with all the brick. And I think it would, you know, certainly do disjustice to the neighborhood itself. You know, us as homeowners who've purchased the neighborhood under those, you know, circumstances. There's plenty of housing in Murfreesboro. There's plenty of Old South properties that if I wanted to go get a lesser quality of home, then sure, I could go get one. But I specifically love the neighborhood. I love the location. I think it has a great potential, and I would certainly like to see that justice done and help make it stay a nice neighborhood. And plus, you know, with having the garage set back, there's going to be cars parking on the sides of the road, which I know now is actually, well, at the time when the homeowners was set up, was against the homeowners association, part of it as well, to have cars parked on the side of the road. So that draws maybe parking concerns if only two were allowed in the driveway. But other than that, I just wanted to voice my opinion. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. Would anybody else like to come? Nobody?
This is all of us.
All neighborhoods.
You got a quorum, huh? In that case, I'll close the public hearing and open it for discussion for the members of the Planning Commission. Mr. Young?
Let's see, I got some questions. Ms. Ealy, you might want to help me. The reduction of the setback on the garage, is it still, can we get four cars in the driveway without having one's tail end sticking out over into the road or on the sidewalk?
I think it depends on the type of car, but generally, a parking space is between eight and a half and 10 feet wide and about 20 feet long for a parking space in a commercial site. I guess if you wanted to apply this, if the driveways were 16 to 20 feet wide, you can get two side by side, but if you're using the same dimensions, then you would need something more than 25 feet to get two cars, one in front of the other.
So, but they're moving, they want to move the garage back, is that what?
Closer to the street. Go from 35 feet to 25 feet.
Okay.
So like these pictures, is that right? This is the way we want to go?
Yes, ma'am.
What did you hold up? Can I see it again?
Someone's unpacking.
I put that on the screen.
All right. Still, what about the percentage of brick versus cementitious? What's the percentage before?
I'll say, I don't remember what the percentage is before, but I do know that if in a program book, the requirement is that it needs to be a masonry product, then hardy plank, we count that as masonry. So if the specific program that was approved by council and recommended by the developer says this house needs to be 100% masonry, if it's 100% hardy, then I as a planner or my coworkers will sign off on it and say it's okay. But if they specifically say brick or stone, then it has to be brick or stone. So as a practice, we consider hardy plank to be a cementitious material equivalent, different in style, of course, but equivalent to that or brick of stone, but the style is different. And I think, do you remember, Ms. Aylott, what the specific percentage was?
No, I don't, but what I do remember is that the backs and the sides could be a different material. It's the front that we're talking about. It's the front that is, has the brick requirement.
How many lots around these are already developed and built?
Seven lots are developed, or there are houses on seven lots.
Included with your general materials is an exhibit, Mr. Gillian, that is from the old program book, and you can see some handwriting. I'm looking for the one in my package. Ms. Ealy can put it up on the screen. This one right here.
I got that one.
Okay, the last one. There you go.
And what you can see is there are six lots that are shaded that are already permitted. Not all of those are completely built, but they are permitted for construction under the existing requirements.
I saw that, but that's, like I said, how many of those that are permitted actually have houses on them already?
I think that in the area photograph, there are, it shows that there are five houses that have buildings on them in 2011.
Okay, and then there's roughly, what, another two or three that are permitted?
Two more have since been permitted.
One more question. Ms. Ealy, what about the square footage of the houses? Are there any changes in that?
That's not being, they're not asking for any change in the minimum required square foot.
Ms. Jones?
Either Ms. Ealy or Mr. Aylott, I'm not sure. This, again, I'm looking at this paper. So the home's masonry content will be brick or stone foundation, then 80% of the front exterior in brick, stone, cement tiles, stucco, or fiber cement board. With remaining exterior, so the other 20% on the front and then the sides in the back, to be brick, stone, cement fiber board, cement tiles, vinyl, or stucco. Is that correct?
That's correct. And let me give you, you have pointed out something, the only change in the language is that they're adding cement fiber board, which is the cementitious siding. Otherwise, the language is verbatim from the existing program. All they're doing is adding-
So the original plan also had that?
Yes.
On the sides and the back?
Right. All they're adding to that section is the cement fiber board.
On the front.
Into that paragraph. In that paragraph, all they're adding is the words fiber cement board, because they do not currently exist in that paragraph.
Are the sides or back vinyl the ones that are constructed right now?
That may be. Right now, these people's houses could have vinyl on the back. It may very well have it, for all I know. I'm not certain.
Well, the cement fiber board, the hardy plank construction, we've seen used throughout the community, but mainly in upscale neighborhoods and commercial developments, have we not?
We associate with it, but we see it everywhere. We see vinyl everywhere, too. Or we see the desire for it everywhere, anyway.
The majority of Stratford Hall is all hardy plank, is it not?
I believe that it is, but for a casual view, I can't always tell the difference from the street.
Yeah, I don't think there's any vinyl in Stratford Hall.
No, I think, that's what I'm saying, there's not any real brick over there except for some-
It's that look, it's that same look, but it is all the hardy?
Hardy plank.
But in Maribella and a lot of the nice upscale neighborhoods, there's a lot of that.
One more.
Yes, Ms. Young?
This is just a general question. Have you all ever noticed after our hailstorms on any, have you ever seen any damage on any of the hardy plank houses or whatever we want to call that material? I can't say that other word.
I believe that what we have found is that the vinyl is not as resistant to hail damage as a cementitious siding. I've not observed it myself, but I hear reports from people that even the hardy is damaged in a severe storm, but not to the degree that we see with vinyl. Incidentally, there are times when brick, of course, it has its own problems, and it comes with the veneer often will crack with the foundations, particularly during periods of drought, and then followed by periods of rain when the soil flexes. So all materials have goods and bads, and none of it is resistant, none of it's perfect. The hardy plank seems to be resistant to that kind of cracking because it already has joints in between them. But from, between hardy plank and vinyl, hardy seems to be more resistant to hail damage.
It would definitely hold up better against hail. That was just a, I just wanted to know question.
Any other questions, sir?
Good question.
Any other questions?
I think I understand where some of the folks that spoke coming from tonight. Can you show me which of these houses, those three, are they all back to back of these or next to each other lined up on the ones that are drawn here in red? The addresses of three people that spoke, will they fall into this?
Oh, I don't know which ones they are.
There's only five houses out there.
They would be three of the seven lots that are marked in red.
I think if you look at the ortho photo, that may be a little bit more helpful. You can see the five structures, and also the ortho photo has some lots shaded blue, and those are the ones that are owned by Old South.
Okay, I'm looking at that.
Yeah, you can see the houses on the ones that are existing.
The first house that was built is the house that's closest to Florence Road, and that was the last gentleman who spoke. I'm starting with that one because it was the first house that was built in the area.
Mr. Aylott, so in, going back to one of the gentlemen comment that spoke, it looks like, of course, I can't know exactly the number of feet, but the way the houses were originally, the PRD was originally set up, the front of the house could be at 25 feet. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
And so what Old South's requesting is that the garage could be at the same, at 25 feet, even with the front of the house, correct?
That is correct.
So if I understand that correctly, they could do it anyway? Is that?
No, I believe it must say the garage has to be at 35. Is that what it says right now?
That is correct. When this program book was put together, we required that the garage, that the house could sit within 25 feet of the street, or up to 25 feet from the street, but the garage door itself, which had to be 35 foot, which is the equivalent of RS10 zoning, and that allowed for more parking in the driveway. What some of the builders have opted to do, and we've seen this in other areas of our community, rather than meet the setback with the garage door and bring the rest of the house forward and thereby leave a larger backyard, what they do is just use the same house plan they use elsewhere and just bring the whole house back. The same house meets 35 foot, same setback as the garage. In some cases, maybe the rest of the house is 40 foot and the garage door is 35 foot. They, rather than create a new house plan and bring it with the house closer to the street and the garage door set back. And you can see in the very first house, the very first house that is basically what Fox Ridge did. They just set the whole house back and sacrificed the backyard, because they needed to find a buyer who would be willing to live with that condition.
So it's parking versus a backyard. It's the parking space in the driveway versus backyard space.
Okay, here, and let's talk about that a little bit. Find out what we want to do. The program book for Stewart Crossing recognized that we're having smaller lots, and within that subdivision, there's a couple of, there will ultimately be several little parking lots. One of them is already created out by the cemetery. You can see it in the area photograph. It's a space of about eight or 10 parking spaces. They were basically for guests or people who wanted to visit the little amenity area in the front. Within the rest of the development, further to the back, there are two or three cul-de-sacs, and each one of those, within the cul-de-sac, will have eight to 12 parking spaces. They'll be added to it as these cul-de-sacs come online, as the development is extended, for guest parking. So we realized we were seeing smaller lots when we did this plan. We wanted to create something for the guests. Now, back in the time that we approved this program book, back in about 2007, 2005 timeframe, we were seeing a lot of housing production, and we were beginning to be more and more concerned about parking. And we adopted a requirement of four parking spaces per single-family dwelling. And one way to achieve that was to create a sufficient separation between the street and the garage door. We did that with the expectation that that would allow us to see four parking spaces in a hard surface driveway. And I will be very frank with you, that was a good idea. On the other hand, it has been a little bit difficult to see implemented in some places, particularly those areas that already had the setbacks down to 25 foot. And I also hear, in some households, they don't seem to want that much parking. Now, you all have to decide whether or not you all want to maintain it here. One of the things we did as a failsafe here was to see these other little parking areas, and you can see them in the illustration, these little cul-de-sacs here in the back, each one designed to have the guest parking, which we don't have in most subdivisions. So it's a little bit of a trade-off. We anticipated that we wanted to see some amount of room for guest parking, so they wouldn't be on the street blocking driveways and such. But we also required the setback.
Mr. Aylott, we've seen quite a few, or several, PRDs come in for adjustment over the last, since the economic turn down. And quite often, we have looked upon that favorably because of the economic conditions, and what was working five years ago, six years ago, may not be working now. That apparently is what happened to this subdivision. It's my opinion that the requests made by the developer are relatively minimal, and if it means the success of this subdivision, and I know the property owners don't want property values affected negatively by any chance, but the other thing would be, you want a successful development to be there, and you've got to have other houses in there. And if that is the one thing that makes the difference in this development being a success, I don't see it negatively affecting the existing homes that are there. Hardy plank is a very acceptable, in my opinion, very acceptable building material, and a lot of areas would rather use that than brick. And you see it in many, many upscale homes. I think Old South is another thing. We've had, this Planning Commission has had good results with Old South developments, and so their comfort level with me is pretty good, because they stick by their developments and they see them through to the finish. And in a lot of ways, the residents that are there right now are fortunate that a strong developer has come in and taken over the rest of the development for the subdivision. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman? I think one of the unique things about this subdivision, and maybe the residents haven't realized how fortunate they are, is that additional parking. If you have a Super Bowl party or your five-year-old birthday, there's not enough room in anybody's driveway to put 10 or 12 or 15 cars. So you will have some additional parking behind the cemetery on the front, which is one, two, three, four, you know, everybody could park there, and then the reconstruction of the cul-de-sacs, which are additional parking. I think that's a real plus for this subdivision. I know that's not under discussion tonight, but most people don't have that, additional parking in their neighborhood. And here again, as Mr. Lamb pointed out, the hardy planker is used in some of the, it's used all over, and it's been a very successful product. Stratford Hall was mentioning, and I think it's, great majority of it is hardy plank.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to kind of voice my opinion after all the discussion. I mean, there were several things that I had to try to make sure I understood where we were going and what we were doing. But I do agree in regards to the cementous, correct? Cementitious? Hardy plank. I don't have a problem with that. I would have been concerned if we were adding vinyl in, but if that was there to begin with on the sides and the back, then I certainly don't have a problem with that. And, you know, I think the offset of the 10 feet to, you know, however they decide to do that, you know, there's something to be said for not having all driveway in your front yard and to have some green space in the back, but then it's, I mean, I think that works both ways. I do think it means more to have your neighborhood be complete and have other houses be built out there and to have it become a neighborhood, as opposed to continue to sit there with just the five houses. And I do think it's good that you have, as everybody said, a developer that can come in and make that happen.
Let me ask this question. If we go with this amendment, it allows for that material, but, Mr. Beavers, I may ask this of you, is that going to be market-driven, though, as to what gets used in that regard? If you've got some, you're still going to have the ability to use brick fronts if that's what the buyer is looking for in that?
Yes, sir.
And you all do build houses that have brick fronts?
We do. Probably the most successful subdivision we have is Pugget Station, and it's, I mean, it's mainly stone and hardy in there, but we do, we do some brick in there. I mean, it's, like you said, it's market-driven, what people want.
Do you foresee that the bulk of these being built, is spec counts to be sold or being sold lots within the building put on after the fact?
With the bank's lending practices right now, I'm sure we'll do a few specs, but we'll also do, you know, quite a few pre-sales, I'm sure.
As far as the difference in price of building a house out of brick versus a hardy, we talked about hardy and brick being-
It's about 70% of what it would cost to do brick.
Okay, so there's about a 30% difference between the two, if someone chooses brick versus hardy.
Any other questions for Mr. Beavers? Any other questions for Mr. Beavers?
The only question that I have, and I'm sure it wasn't part of the PRD that there would be no parking on the streets, it was just part of a homeowners association rule or guideline, so that, that would be up to the homeowners association to change, and it would have been up to the homeowners association to enforce, correct? Correct. We have no intentions of changing that. Right. And so my, I'll just say that my hesitation with moving the garage up, you know, to the 25 foot, was the fact that that would give an opportunity or an option more so because of space to park on the street, but because of the fact that it would be the homeowners association enforcing it, and it was a rule of the homeowners association versus a part of the PRD, they're still going to have the ability to enforce that. So I think I've kind of gotten past that, that issue, because nothing has changed as to how it would be enforced. With that, Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion that we approve, as submitted.
Thank you. Motion's made in second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight. We appreciate your attendance. Moving on to the next, continues, that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. We'll move on to staff reports and other business. We have one item on there on a mandatory referral for CUD. Ms. Drives?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission. I hope this won't require a great deal of discussion. The city acquired a property, we had to acquire the whole property because of the change in elevation as a result of building Joby Jackson. And now, CUD needs to put a water line across the front of that house, and they need an easement from the city to do that. We reviewed that with Mr. Griffith, Mr. Huddleston, that the house will still be usable, that it's not going to affect the saleability. The house may not be able to be sold because of access problems, but that's some issues we're going to have to face when further down the road. This easement, we feel, is something that we should go ahead and give CUD and recommend your approval. There is a drawing of it attached to, as the last page. It does take up most of the front yard, but, for the easement, but that's just so that they can get to it. There will be a line, a water line run roughly through the middle of that easement. Happy to answer any questions?
So the eventual use of the property has not been determined yet?
No, it has not. We're not, the, the way the road's going to be built eliminated their driveway off of Joby Jackson. And we are going to try to access the property off of Vapor Trail, I believe is the name of it, is a county street that's behind this subdivision. We're not sure that that can be done yet. It may be that we just have to demolish the house and have a vacant lot to sell to one of the next-door neighbors, but we won't know that until, for a couple of years. And assuming it is saleable, and, you know, this water line easement's not going to have any adverse impact on the saleability or livability of the house.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Raedelot, do you have any further business?
No, sir.
There's no other business. We stand adjourned.